We are going to start our morning workshop with Public Works Director Gordy Kelsey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have a couple items on the consent agenda. First one is item number eight. It's a fairgrounds partial fee waiver request from the rodeo Bible camp. And they have requested it's around eighteen hundred dollars. About eleven hundred dollars of that was already worked off this past weekend on items that they did around the fairgrounds, painting and weed eating. And and then they have some in-kind services that they'll be taking care of their janitorial and grooming of the arena during the event to pay for that. Item number nine is a supplemental agreement between the county and Felton Fire Services. And this is for our inspections that we do at our facilities, the ducts and the alarm systems. Item number ten is a letter of support to address the Washington State Historic County Courthouse Rehabilitation Grant Program. And that's for our request of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I don't know if you want to explain anymore on that?
I think we've talked about that. It's.
That's for the actual Superior.
That's for the actual Superior Court. It's a twenty-five to fifty percent match. We'll have that because we can use the stuff that we're actually doing. That we you can use the period of match is other projects that we've done, such as the remodel we're now doing. So the timeframes from January of this year through, I think, January of two thousand and twenty-four. So.
Do we typically just use our matches, things that we already have programmed?
Yes.
That we're doing anyway?
That's exactly what, you know, in any engineering, they won't.
What does one get for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars? That sounds like a pretty extensive remodel.
It is. It is.
Or at least it used to be.
Yeah.
Now it's probably a new coat of paint and carpet.
Well, somebody will come in. The idea is they're going to refinish all the benches. So, you know, that somebody have to come in, haul them out, take them up, refinish them. And that'll be fairly gossly. New furniture, not so much new furniture, but a new bench. Because that stuff is getting older. Not only that, it is doesn't meet any ADA standards or any standards. Plus, the proximity of that, that's been a real issue for the clerks and the judge is because your defendants are like this far from the jury. So they can intimidate the jury. They actually sit above and they're looking down at the jury. So that will be changed.
That was my question. Is there going to be a built-in space for secured defendants?
Yes, there will be that too. We have a temporary space now. There'll be more of a built-in space that they can, you know, that they can sit. And then just actually bringing up the acoustics and the lighting and the and that are not the greatest. Of course, everything in the courthouse needs to replicate what was originally put in there. And the wood in there is it's like mahogany, but it's something different, like South American. I think we get by using mahogany. It's working out, but mahogany, you're well aware of is not cheap. So anytime you get into a courtroom, it's expensive.
And that's, I guess I'm just trying to collect the answers before the citizens yell at me for all the fancy woodwork and the waste of money. The the grant is for the purpose of keeping it historic and not putting those chairs in that courtroom.
That is correct. While it's nice that that's why they pay for it, because they want to have a say.
Right.
And they do have a say because we have to submit everything down to color patterns and they'll go, no, that's not from that era. You can't.
And our entire grant match of that project is essentially other projects that we were doing anyway.
Other projects that we're doing are like the HVAC systems. We have to put them in. That's why this is ample opportunity for us to apply for this grant. Because we have some safety concerns that the courts need to do to deal with, that the courts want us to deal with. And the only way to really do that is through a remodel, because even if we were paying for it, we still have to go through the process with DHAP because it's a historical building.
Once we took the first dollar, we're.
Yes, and they've given us quite a bit of money.
They have given us a lot of money.
They're paying for it. They can they can have it anywhere they want.
What's that? What's that? The golden rule? Those that have the gold make the rules?
Yeah, and I think the other thing with the Superior Court is court has to continue on. And it's not as easy to move the court and all their recording and video and those kinds of things and keep them being able to do business during this remodel. That's that will drive the cost up.
Yeah. Is part of this remodel upgrading electronics and video and stuff like that or no?
I don't think we have anything in in that. No.
No, we'll look at the acoustics, but as far as actually upgrading the electronics, no, I mean, there's a chance to still add it. But they their system works good is what that's what we've been told, that their system works good.
Work for me?
All right. Item number eleven is another reimbursable work agreement between the county and Clickatack County Fire District number fourteen. We have two payment approvals, a pay estimate for James Dean Construction for Courtney Road in the amount of five hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-one cents. And then a final pay estimate to Thompson Brothers excavating in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. And this is for the the countywide guidepost and signing project that was just completed this spring. Let's see, on the construction side. Talked about the Thompson Brothers project, Roosevelt grade paving project. There's really no change. We're still waiting for results from the cores we took from our forensic analysis. The asphalt there in the one section, small works guard rail project. The contractor is waiting for materials before he can really give us a schedule and get started. Courtney Road, the contractor is blasting hard rock today and then working on some of the soft soil areas, stabilizing those areas. And they're also looking at grinding up the lower section, the pavement, the chip seal on the lower section, so they can actually work that. And their idea, their hope is that they're working toward trying to pave at least one lift this year on the whole project, which would be really nice.
With the grindings?
They'll be left in place.
For somewhere else or?
In the road.
Yeah, yeah, they'll just grind and left in place. Yeah.
I saw the machine was there yesterday. I wondered what was what was up because I didn't realize because I'm like, hmm, I don't know what you're grinding. So that makes sense. I forgot about their. It's the P that it's the project is not only just the the new stuff, it's part of the old stuff too.
Right.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it'll it'll be rougher for people, you know, climbing that grade on a gravel road will be different than a paved section. So.
A little bit of washboarding going on there.
Yeah, but the contractor will be responsible to maintain it, but it'll, you know, they had it scheduled a little few weeks later. But this is the only time they can get the grinder in there, so they have to do it. So. Let's see, annual striping continues this week on throughout the county. On the design side, Clickatap Path, we've advertised a small works contract for the concrete work. We're on ad for the courthouse parking lots. I think we have five bidders signed up and whether they all submit, we'll see.
When is the, what are we thinking that's going to be completed?
This fall.
Fall is in September or fall is in October, November?
Probably late fall. Yeah. Provided we get good bids.
Right.
Good news on the bridge call for projects. We had requested six point three four million. And we were notified on Friday that we received four of our or three of our four projects for a total of three million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And we're still waiting to hear. We're not sure if they haven't selected the bridges yet. That's probably a little more competitive than the maintenance type work that we on the other three projects. So we're trying to find out if they have not finished that selection yet, because originally they told us in the fall they'd be selecting, but these got kicked out sooner than we thought. So that's good news.
That is good news.
You said they approved three of the four. Which one didn't they approve?
The bridge replacement in Glenwood. So that one's still.
But we don't know.
We don't know that we do. It's still on there somewhere.
Yeah, we're we're not sure if they've selected and or haven't haven't made the final selections yet.
And which is that the one in town? Is that?
No.
I would say, what's that three million dollar bridge in Glenwood?
It's Beazey Glenwood Highway, just before you get to Lake Lakeside Road, the canal that goes to Outlet Creek. Yeah.
Yeah, because I was thinking that little kind of box culverted town. It's like, wow, that's three billion dollars. Quite a bridge.
Let's see. Rock Creek Bridge, we're still working on that, bridge painting, painting those girders. Harms Road, we did some potholing for a wrap grant. So I think, you know, most of the, I think, four out of the five holes we dug were really soft soil. And so that helps us out with the scoring.
And this is only from Centerville Highway to Finn Ridge, right?
Yeah, yeah, that first section. Yep. Let's see, so maintenance. So we're kind of chip sealing and a lot of our east end guys are hauling rock for the chip seal on the west side. So they can finish Canyon Road Tunnel, Balch and Bates Roads. And and then we're doing some grading on the east side as well as up at the radio tower site. So we're kind of spread out. Let's see, the services building, the the blinds people came last week. And they were able to install the tracks so the sheet rockers can finish the sheet rock around the windows. Although the blind they brought out was not the right size, so we still don't have that blind.
I know why they went bankrupt.
I was there when the guy was telling telling the prime contractors person, you know, that they didn't have it. And the guy that came out said, I told the guy it was the wrong size and he said, we'll just take it anyway. So I'm like, I don't I don't get you guys. But the track's in, which allows everybody else to finish and and eventually we'll get the blind. Yeah. And then the HVAC units, the equipment manufacturer is onsite today at nine thirty. So they're here evaluating those units on the third floor and hopefully we'll get resolution after they have a chance to look at them. And no chains on the HVAC unit replacement at the Pioneer Center, radio site. I don't know.
We're just about done with all the site work. We're actually, they're going to start digging the footings. It'll start going vertical next week. We'll start forming the footings and then pour at the end of next week for the building site. I'm actually taking Jeff up there tomorrow afternoon so he can see the site. We've changed it just a little bit, but I've talked to Jeff. He's fine. But yeah, it's moving forward.
So are we are we constructing?
Yes, our carpenter is going to construct.
I didn't recall, you know, bidding or anything. Okay.
Estimated to be online in the spring still.
Yes, you know, again, I can't guarantee that because I don't have.
I just need to know if it pushes out.
No, no, we're still we're we're still moving forward on the schedule that we have.
Right.
And as far as what we have control of, it's staying or staying the same. We should be going out to bid before too long for our tower. And the crew that, you know, the contractor to put the tower in. And I've still been told they're eight-week lead item, which I'm still finding that very hard to believe because everything else is so far out.
You can't get a pair of shoes in April.
I know, let alone a designed tower. That's not been my experience, but again, you know, do the half glass full thing.
Right? Well, I would I would schedule my concrete as early as possible, as far as get on the schedule.
Yes.
It takes, it's not like the, I've had to adapt my way of doing things. You have to kind of guess out a week, sometimes ten days out and it's, wow, I was used to two days.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been scheduled like for the footings. We just, we set the time for the pour and then we back everything into that. That's what we have to do. So we're like, okay, it's coming this, it's coming on Thursday. That means we better have the forms in by Wednesday.
Right.
Period. Get time to get them inspected.
Early Thursday morning. That's my model.
Sometimes it's that way.
Not on purpose, not on, not by design, but that's by practice seems like. And I don't know, maybe it's not as bad up here out of Goldendale. I'm not sure, but it's.
It's not as, but you know.
West End, it's, I mean, it's, you know, a week is the minimum that you can schedule out because they just, they're booked.
All right, July events at the fairgrounds. We have a wedding this coming weekend. Next week is rodeo Bible camp. And Clickatap Canyon Days follow that in July, July twenty-ninth through the thirty-first. And we'll be submitting a waiver for next week's signature for the county property, which is where the caboose sits, that that ground. For their use, we've mowed it and so it's ready, but we're waiting for a few more pieces of information from them. To follow up on your question on counters on Harms and Horseshoe Bend Road. So those aren't the normal counters that we set. We got a request from the Centerville School District about control of the intersection. Currently, there's nothing because you can see. And so they had concerns, so like a yield sign scenario on one of the legs. And so we have to put counters up to kind of figure out where to verify where the traffic, most of the traffic is coming from and going to, and then that helps us.
On the hand, the number of times I've had a car at that intersection other than my own.
Yeah.
So I'm surprised they brought that up.
Yeah, so we'll, we're following up. So that's why they're set there. They're just for the numbers, not the speeds.
How many? Buildings and grounds guys that are normally working the fairgrounds or prepping the fairgrounds for the fair, are we short?
We usually have one temporary and, well, we're short, we're short a temporary that we used to you, used to use in years past. And then we have Ben is gone and then another employee is out on the maternity leave. So basically, we're down three people.
Yeah. Because I heard some grumblings over the weekend, so I knew we were down one, but wasn't aware of the other ones.
Yeah. Let's see, follow up on the historic photos for the services building. So Ken Marvel is out right now and he'll be back the first week of August to set something up for maybe the the following week. And so I don't know if you wanted to go to the the big selection or do you want us to just go collect a bunch on a thumb drive and then come back? For you guys to look at and make a, you know, narrow that that down.
So they're going to be putting them all on a thumb drive?
They want us, one or two people to come over, Ken does, and look at what they have and and kind of make some selections, you know, whether we get thirty or fifty from whatever they have. Put those on a thumb drive and then come back and and have you guys take a look at them and decide which ones we really want to have in the building.
Yeah, if that's what they want to do, then I'm fine with it and let me know when.
Okay, so the big selection with Ken.
I will be at whatever you do.
Okay, all right. When he gets back and lets us know when he's available, we'll set something up and I'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay, FEMA. So we met with FEMA Moche and Jeff King and I last Friday. And to talk about their rolling out their new maps and how to, the best way to get information to the public. And so they are working on a story map for us, like they did for Skamania County, and that will go on our website. They have literature that they've sent us, basically draft handouts, postcards, if we want to send those out to people. Or hand them out at the fair or other community events, just to get stuff in people's hands, to point them in the right direction and where to go look. And I think the story map will really help a lot because I think it really covers everything or most things people can ask. And then it provides, if they want more, there's contact information for FEMA. So one thing that they did ask is they're open to having a Zoom-type meeting for the communities. So anyone like the, you know, any of the town councils that are interested or other cities or anybody really in our county could attend. And so I know that we had kind of talked about that. Seems like a good way to do that, to get the information out to people that might be interested. And have a discussion, have a FEMA person there for people to ask questions. So if that's something you want to pursue, we can just talk to them about doing it. They talked about maybe the September timeframe. You know, when people are kind of back from vacation, settled into school and and more of a routine, so.
How many communities other than Trout Lake are? Heavy into this map and the changes and and flooding. I mean, this a big issue. I mean, we have the little bit here, but I think if you had a community meeting on FEMA in Goldendale, nobody'd show up. Trout Lake, you'd get eighty-five people there. How many other communities? I don't want to have them if they're not needed, is my point. But for the communities that definitely want one, I think they should be available.
Yeah, so the Zoom meeting, anybody could attend, so they'd have one. And then whether you're from Trout Lake, Clickatap, Goldendale, any of the affected communities could attend and ask questions.
Let them all know and if they want to.
That was going to be my question was, are they talking about multiple, you know, like community specific or just one community meeting? Covering everybody.
Yeah, that's kind of how they talked. We originally started talking about, well, you know, do we want to meet with the communities? And then they're like, well, usually we just schedule one. Yeah, so.
Although I can, you know, to to Commissioner Christopher's question, really, yeah, Trout Lake, Clickatap potentially. Would have some interest. Other than that, I'm not, I'm not really thinking of anybody else that this would really be a, that there was any significant changes. That.
Were a lot of interest.
For a lot of, or a lot of interest.
Yeah, right. Yeah, maybe some of the Goldendale, the little Clickatap, there's issues through town.
Through town, but it's really, really those three groups. I can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that makes sense, we'll tell them, yeah, we'd we'd like to see that happen. Okay. One last thing. So I did ask them about the Track D area and they they said, well, we're working with the tribe. And we've started, you know, discussing a process to do the same thing with the tribe through that area. So just to kind of follow up, because we had questions and we talked about it and weren't sure why. So.
Interesting. That's why it's a big blank area.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
That's it for my list, unless you have something else, Jeff.
That's it.
Anything else for him, sir?
I really don't. No.
I don't either.
All right, thank you.
We are early, but Brenda, if you would like to come forward, you can when you get time.
Good morning.
Madam Auditor, I said Brenda. I keep.
You guys.
I know.
I'll tell you.
Oh, well, she's soon to be Brenda again.
Yeah.
I said she's soon to be Brenda again. I know you were always so formidable.
I try to be. Hey, there's not a lot on here. I have some verbal things to add besides what's on here. So ballots are mailed out. Got our first pickup yesterday. It's, I, we haven't even got to it to know how many is in there because they came in last, late yesterday afternoon, because it's a full day for countywide. It looks like for the first pickup, it's going to be pretty good, but I, we're not going to estimate what voter turnout might or might not be on the first few. Had a lot of questions regarding the change in our congressional districts and explaining it to people. Some are happy and some are not. But we can't fix it. So when all else fails, we give them the redistricting commission website or phone number. So, and Robin Andrews joined our team on July first. She's our new voter reg person. She's doing a great job. She's got a steep learning curve, coming in right in the middle of an election, a big one. So. And any questions on elections before I go on? Oh, I do need to mention the Centerville box is up. We do have people to close that box on election night, so that's good. And it looks great. Public Works did an outstanding job as usual. Finance, not a lot there. The auditors are going to start on August eighth, so we'll have to have everything to them by then. They wanted to start in September. And I said, no, it's too close to the single audit deadline. Well, you know, you're you're kind of, you're cash county, you're high risk, so it doesn't really matter. And I said, but I don't want a finding. Well, it won't affect because you're still high risk. I I said, I don't want to be that beta county. So instead of having Suzie, we're going to have somebody else because Suzie's not available till September. And they did say that if we don't have all of their data to them by August eighth, when they're going to start. It's, they're just going to bump us to September on their own. So I'm going to get a little aggressive here soon. I haven't really sent stuff out because I seem to have spent a lot of time on licensing lately. I need to focus on that the rest of this week. We did have one person we interviewed for the, my open position of finance and we're still looking. So. Licensing, I have no idea with the economy being what it's supposed to be, where people are coming up with the money to buy cars. But my gosh, we have been slammed with renewals and with new vehicle purchases. The last week of June was a killer and Shirley had scheduled a vacation three months ago. So it was Heather and I, and we had people literally lined up down the stairwell. Yeah, and that went on most of the week and then following the Fourth of July, on the fifth, then Shirley didn't come back till the sixth. But yeah, Heather and I were, I thought we'd been run over by a semi or something by the time the end of the day got over. And but to see the fees were changing July first, so plates were going from ten dollars a plate to fifty. And that doesn't, forty bucks doesn't sound like much, but when you have a car, that's an eighty-dollar increase. And they've added ten dollars to your licensing fee. So anything that cost you eighty-eight, twenty-five last year will be ninety-eight, twenty-five this year. So I wished I had realized that. I would license a couple more things because you can renew up to up to six months for your expiration. So. You know, we're just going to be short, it looks like for right now for a while. Recording, still working with Tyler on implementation of our recording kiosk, so. And I will have to have a supplemental for that, but it'll come out of auditor's O and M. And veterans.
Before you go on, if I may, how is that going to work exactly? As far as like you'll just.
People can go in and fill out. We should direct them to the kiosk to fill out their application and then go to Tori to get the rest of the paperwork and pay. There'll be a credit card option, so we will have credit cards now in in recording, which I don't think our treasurers were happy about, but that's just the way it is. Going to have to be. I mean, it's it's the way of the world anymore. And so people can order copies as well, not only on digital archives now, they could go out and order them, I'm told, on on our website. They can do a lot of things on the website that, you know, and they can pay on the website. So or they can pay at the counter with a credit card, which we've. So, or they can pay at the counter with a credit card, which we've.
So this will just be, folks will have the option to basically do this stuff online, in your office, at a kiosk.
Or at home.
Or at home.
Mm-hmm, but they have to come in the office to finish it, to get their.
Well, that was my, I was kind of curious, in the end, you're not, you're, you're still going to have to have some interaction with the. It's not going to completely eliminate.
Right, and we've required cash only on marriage licenses, because, I mean, it's been that way in this county, in Skamania County, for probably thirty years, because people were writing checks, and then they'd be bad checks, and then you could find them, and, you know, so it's cash.
And they're not actually married, because their license is invalid?
That, that's a whole different issue. Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, okay, okay, so that you explained, yeah, that's, I just wanted to be sure that was.
And what that also does is take the liability off of whoever is sitting at the recording desk, because if you misspell their name or you something else, then it comes back on us, where that's going, going to put the onus on the applicants to make sure everything is spelled correctly, so.
Okay, is this going to free up a lot of employee staff time from having to?
It could, we don't know yet. This is more of a convenience, and I have money in Auditors O and M, and everything's going online and digital anymore, so, you know. I thought, well, this is a good opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
I like technology.
Yeah, and we had that kiosk there from our elections grant, because we, we were able to put that in, so people can register to vote, and it's remote, and it was during COVID. It was part of the, one of the COVID grants I got. So then we just add that to that same computer, so. Veterans, we've received several applications. I'm hoping to start interviewing next week, so.
Is it just you that hires, or is the veterans committee sitting in, or?
It's my office, it's me. Yeah, the very first time we did this, we involved the advisory board.
Well, that's why I was asking, because I figured that could be a cluster, if you have five different opinions kind of thing in that, so. Okay, good enough, yeah.
The first time around, it was, it was, it was very special. So, we do need to get that filled. I've spent quite a bit of time, like, last night I went down and I had to do some, you know, Bill didn't plan on being gone, gone, so he had many things that needed filed, and we have veterans that have appeal hearings coming up that need copies of their files. So I spent a lot of time down there, the last, well, yesterday, and then a couple of days last week, got everything filed and organized. Now I get to start on the Goldendale office, because you can't ask someone to come into something that is totally a disarray. And it, it wasn't a disarray to Bill, I'm sure, but he didn't, he wasn't able to come back in and get it filed. So, lots of questions coming in, and notices up. The website's been changed, is temporarily closed. Do we fill the position? Give them resources. They cannot go to Oregon, to Wasco or Hood River. You have to have an Oregon address and be an Oregon resident for them to help. Their whole, their program is totally different. It's run through the state. The monies do not go to the county, and the counties run it, is totally run through the state of Oregon. So they have their rules and that, so it's, it's been kind of interesting dealing with those veterans. Phone messages have been changed. I realized yesterday that his out-of-office was on, even though I'm getting the email, so I got IT to turn that off, because I, they had to go in the back door to turn that off. I couldn't do it. So, anyway, any other questions?
Unrelated, but Finance Committee meeting this Friday, I assume, as scheduled in here? I'm taking Jake's place since he's not here.
Not here, we should, upstairs. Mount Hood Room, directly up there.
Uh, no, I don't know.
What?
I, I only knew because I looked at my calendar and the color changed from, of Commissioner Anderson to Commissioner Christopher. Oh, well, I'm assuming I'm still sitting in.
Yeah, and check with Greg.
Well, he's out for the week, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he'll be home going, yeah, yeah, you could do that.
So that's.
Actually, he can't do that. It has to be the chair or the acting chair. It cannot be designated.
Right.
So if he's home, it's him.
I was going to defer to Greg, but thank you, because.
Because we've checked.
Been down that road.
Yeah, we've been down that road before.
That's not my place to say, so.
So then I would guess that you're going to check with Jake and see if he's going to be.
Is there anything else, you guys?
Nope. Have a fun last election season.
That's really kind of a, that one's kind of a hard pill to swallow.
It's kind of weird, I'm sure, isn't it?
This will be my last. This, this spring, it was, oh, this is my last special. Oh, you know, yeah.
So I'm sure it's kind of weird for both of you to receive your ballots and not have your name on them, and.
I just kind of bypass that, because, you know, I, I've been in an auditor's office long enough, sixteen years here and thirty and a half in Stevenson, that it's kind of, I can get emotional quick, so we're not going to go there, because I'm not going there today. It's a new chapter in my life. I'm looking forward to it. I will miss all the people. I will miss all the work. There are certain things I won't miss.
I can leave a couple.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page, Dave.
I did receive my ballot, so.
Good, that's a good thing. Okay, well, I'm out of here, onto, onto your next item. Thank you.
Next item, Public Health Director Erin Quinn for Department Update. And I should have had Brenda pull that mic a little closer to her, if you can grab that thing and yank it a little closer to you, so, or the, whatever. Whenever you're ready, ma'am.
So I think you got the packet with all, just kind of the numbers, so just kind of going through the clinical updates, family planning. I talked to you before, we applied in January for a telehealth grant to get some more equipment, so that we could do, do more telehealth with what we had. We'd submitted a grant for ten thousand dollars. We priced everything out, and they came back and they really liked our application and told us we should have asked for fifty-two instead. So we're, now that grant is pending again, because we had to essentially reapply with some upgraded numbers, so.
Throwing money.
Just.
If you're the right department, I guess.
Yes, we do understand that this is a temporary situation, and so maximizing on the long-term solutions, because this money that we're getting will not last forever, for sure, so. They're also getting, there's a grant from SWATCH that you should be seeing coming through. We had to, there were some typos in that, that's being corrected, so it should come across in the next couple of weeks. That's going to be some increased dollars for support of providing mental health services, mental health first aid training for all of the staff that are interested in taking that, and some additional hours of nurse support at the White Salmon School. So I think that is, I think that was sixty thousand dollars, so that's going to come through.
Is that mental health training only available to public health employees, or if jail was interested?
The grant was specifically written for the, the, for the cost of my staff's time to take the course, and the cost of paying the facilitators. I think we, we priced out, there were eight people that were interested. I know there are people that are providing that course, so they should be able to reach out and get that training if they were interested, and I'm happy to help them get in touch if they don't have those contacts at this time. It's a good course. I know there's a group, and I, I'm not certain which, which group they're falling under, but they are working at getting more instructors and being able to provide that as a, as a training to more just community members and, and certainly the jails, so. It'd be really nice, and I'm not volunteering, first of all. It'd be really nice if someone in the county actually got an instructor level certification for that and could provide training to county staff as, so if that was someone's interest, I think that would be fantastic. I am not interested. Thanks for asking. It's not my thing, I'm sorry. No, Rob also doesn't want to do it. We did have the Smile Mobile in town. We did the first, so this is the first time we've done the Smile Mobile since COVID, so we set it up in White Salmon, because there was kind of a lot of oversight with the first time, see how that would go. It went really well. They gave dental exams to over forty-two families, so they, you know, depending on what they presented with, were able to get their fillings and exams, fluoride treatments, and then were referred to dentists in the local area if they, if they felt they needed follow-on care. We do hold the grant for the dental program. We've hold it for Clickatatt and Skamania County. I believe their plan is for the next time they'll do a Skamania County site, and then after that, they'll bring it up to Goldendale, since they kind of have all the logistics dialed in. As far as that, they have some outreach that they're going to do clinically. They have the Back to School Bash in Goldendale on the sixth. I believe that's on the courthouse lawn. They're going to have a presence there. I think they're going to work with, I, I believe there's going to be some folks at the fair, and then they have some World Breastfeeding Week outreach that they're going to do in the White Salmon and Trout Lake area on August 6th as well, so. That's kind of what we got going on for clinical.
Can you, before we move on, back to the smile, the smile, but what, who's eligible to access those services?
Anyone with the, I think anyone, but Medicaid, Apple Health. I know they reached out to over two hundred and fifty families to see if there was interest. They did talk to people about transportation, if for whatever reason, if they were from, they called people in the county, like it wasn't just the White Salmon area, so, and talked to people about transportation, yeah. And I don't know if, I, I just can't say for certain that anyone from this end actually ended up coming over, but there is a plan in the future to make sure there's, there's one here.
How did they reach out? Do they have them from previous visits, or do they get their names from the state?
We get a list of names from the state for eligible children, zero to nineteen, so. Yeah, they just called everybody, so. I, we've had the Smile Mobile here in the past. It's been a really long time, but I, I would be pretty confident saying that's probably one of the best turnouts we've had. They put a lot of work into it, making sure that was a good, that was a good. And then the environmental health numbers, you can see there, they felt like they did more site evaluations this month, but they're seeing less permits coming in, so kind of feeling like there's definitely a little bit of a downturn, potentially, so they're just kind of keeping an eye on those numbers. Both the White Salmon and Goldendale Water Labs finished their proficiency testing, so they're certified for another year to continue offering those services. Food Safety's still been pretty busy. Three new locations have opened up, so they've worked with those folks to make sure that they had all of their permits and processes in place. They're still working with the Public Health Emergency Preparedness, so that's one of the big things they're working on, is kind of gearing up for what smoke and wildfire season is going to look like, attending the advisory meetings, and then we did just purchase, we had some grant funding, so that we'll add two more outdoor air monitors for the Dallasport and Roosevelt area. I think we did, I think we did six last year, so that'll just be an additional two for the county. So, and those are on the, on the website, so you can log in and look at those. We did have one confirmed Lyme disease case last month. We had, I think this is, actually, we've had, we had someone that had a bat in their sleeping area, and they were recommended to do the post-exposure prophylaxis. I think there was also a raccoon bite that recommended the post-exposure prophylaxis, and then there was another bat that was sent off for testing to see if it had rabies, so a little bit busy on the, on the rabies.
Do you know what part of the county was the Lyme disease case?
I do not, no. I can find out, though.
So what is the trigger with the bats that?
So typically, one was actually being physically handled by a child, so that's a fairly decent exposure. Another, it, having a bat. Having your, having a bat in your sleeping area is considered an exposure, just because you likely, if you're asleep, you wouldn't know that it bit you. They have pretty sharp teeth. They don't necessarily leave marks. So that would, you know, that's probably one of, in, at least in my experience, that's been one of the bigger ones, where people will just say that there was a bat in my bedroom. That, that's one of the more common causes where we would consider asking them to do the post-exposure prophylaxis.
And this is exposure for rabies, not Lyme, right?
Rabies, correct, yes.
I just, I had a bat in my, like, outdoor umbrella. It was, when I went to open it, it, it flew off. It didn't bite me. It was, yeah, get me in there, I guess.
You don't want the.
That would explain a lot.
Six-foot distance thing from bats.
I think, so if you were sleeping under your umbrella.
No, I was not.
Then we would have a different conversation.
It was in the daytime. It was sleeping, apparently, and.
Yes, you startled it.
It startled it, and it flew off, so.
They're still doing the mosquito trapping every week, so they, you know, they have the sites in Trout Lake and then over here in Goldendale, so they've been sending. I think it takes a little while to actually get the results back of the test, so we won't see those for a little while, so. They're still working with SmartGov, and working on being able to do more workflows and process improvements just with, with internally, and then at some point externally, they'd like to be able to get to the online submittal, so that people can utilize that as a function, so. Questions about environmental health? Just as far as administratively, we do have one individual that's going to be on maternity leave from September to January. Otherwise, we're fully staffed for the first time in a while. Our fiscal person, Elizabeth, started July 1st. She's already done amazing things for us. She's met with, we were just really grateful. Jenna and Greg and Pam all have met with her and helped her, orient her to the county processes and what that looks like. We are still working on digitizing records. There's sure not a lot left, but they, they're almost over four thousand records have gotten scanned. They stalled out there working on a couple other projects, but they'll probably have those completed by fall. We did finish the Tips for Country Living, so hopefully, I know, Dan, you, Commissioner Christopher, looked at that. What else do I have? The Board of Health, so the position closed July 8th. We only had one individual interview, or apply, I'm sorry, during that time period. So, we need to, you all need to decide if we want to interview people that had applied previously, not during the time when we had advertised, and then we should interview them, and I would suggest, if it works, that we do it on the 28th. I understand you have a workshop.
I mean, typically, you like to have more than one applicant. How many had we had previous?
I think there was five or six previously. I didn't recount those.
Yeah, there was one, got a year ago, and then trickles through the COVID thing. It was one kind of pre-COVID, and then trickles through the COVID, and then.
Yeah, I guess it wouldn't hurt anything to at least reach out to the one, and see, are, are you, do you still want to be considered?
Yeah, I don't know that, that we need to invite all of them, but it might be a good idea to reach out to them and see if they're still interested, and then next week, we can pick candidates.
Out of that, out of that pool.
Yeah.
So we would have to, I did talk with the PA about the process, so we would have to review the applications in this setting, just.
Right, that's what I'm thinking. So if we make sure they're still interested, we might be able to drop two or three candidates that we don't have to review next week in this setting to pick the final that we want to.
Who we want to interview.
I don't, I'll follow up with the PA. I don't, I believe, my understanding of what he wrote for me is that we had to do it as a group. And I could be speaking out of turn, but I'll follow up with him.
Because there are some questions. There can only be one from the medical field, which we have one, so two of the others, I believe, have some medical background that may, the one from a year and a half ago, and then one from the fall, so that if you interviewed one of them and hired them, you would need to get rid of the one you have, because.
Right.
So, those are board decisions that we should probably discuss. Because, so those are board decisions that we should probably discuss next week with the full board.
And then as far as I know, and Lee can tell me if I'm wrong, that we still haven't heard anything from the, the tribe. Just as a point of reference.
Their seat is there.
It is. As far as I know, no other counties have gotten any clarification on how to manage that open or what that's going to look like. Anyway, so. And then I think as far as public health, that's all I have. So if you have questions about public health, and then we could probably talk about mental health.
I have no question. More questions? No question.
Mental health. So we, so we're, and we're talking today specifically about the crisis services. So next Tuesday, the Skamania County Commissioners will be hopefully signing an inter-local agreement that will allow their community behavioral health to cover our DCR services for 90 days. And, and I'm just grateful that PA's office, they helped me get that in like, just a very short wrap turnaround and get it over to Skamania County. And they're being very accommodating as well. So their services would start August 6th and it would extend to November 6th. They're willing to do 90 days. My impression from them is that they will not continue those services after the 90 days. That's all they're, they feel they're able to.
They're being a good neighbor.
They are being a good neighbor.
I appreciate their 90 days.
I do as well. They have tasked us with finding the individuals to cover Clicktack County. Their staff do not want to cover our county. So it will be on us to find those individuals to subcontract to Skamania County to cover our county. They've also asked that we identify a team lead and that individual will manage the scheduling of the county and, and work as a liaison with, with the Skamania County Department. So I'm working on that. So in the next two weeks, we're going to be pretty busy. We also, we're going to meet again tomorrow. And I would just like to say Beacon, Leah from Beacon Services has been a phenomenal partner in this. She is, I, I just don't even know where we would be without her. She's done so much work for us. And I, I think you've seen the, hopefully, if you've seen the document, I have been sending out some of, like the notes that are really super amazing. Those are the ones she wrote. Just the very succinct ones are mine.
The one that was in the room that day?
He was, yes, yes. And she, I, my impression, she's very committed in having a really good service in this county. She lives here. I, I do too. She's just, we're, I'm very grateful for her and is running point on organizing a lot of these meetings. So tomorrow we'll be meeting with Lifeline. They're an outfit out of Vancouver. And what they potentially will provide for us in this interim is, it will be telehealth, which I understand nobody's excited about. But you know, we're in a spot where we have to have a service that maybe isn't ideal initially. They'll help with triage. So what they would do was, they would engage with the individual to determine what resources need to be deployed, which would actually, in, in the past, our understanding is that regardless of what the situation is, they would just send a DCR out. This would just kind of be a, a mid-level assessment to see if, yes, in fact, they do need that DCR service or no, if there's another resource that they could potentially plug in there and so act as that triage. So we'll talk with them tomorrow. And, and Beacon, you, you know, there's a lot of funding that was going to Comprehensive that will ultimately roll over to cover these services. So when we're talking about these services, at least so far, they're not coming out of my budget.
Is, back to this triage, is this something that we're thinking about having something of that nature in our own services? Because I think a lot of the phone calls that they get aren't necessarily needed to have a driver drive.
Yes.
So we're still going to have it technically.
Yeah. And I'm, and I'm speaking very much the next 90 days. I have honestly not had the capacity to deal with what's going to happen after that. There's a lot of asks that have to happen to get this August 6th date online. Tomorrow, we're meeting with Comprehensive Mental Health with their leadership. And we're going to talk about how they, how they will integrate with this new setup, how the, how referrals will be managed. Because we will ultimately be referring people to them for outpatient services, right? They're not the crisis service, but they still need to be able to see patients on an outpatient basis. And so what that will look like to get those patients in crisis over to, to mental health. And then just kind of what they see, kind of long-term planning in the community. There's been a lot of conversation and rumors. And so just to clear any of those up about what their longer-term plans are. So it's kind of a short-term plan. And then I just, I need some direction. This is where it's going to come in to us. If we see ourselves continuing this after 90 days, we have, in my opinion, we have two options. We look for an outsourced agency or we decide we're going to do this ourselves. If you feel strongly about doing it ourselves, I would ask that we consider, you all consider a contractor slash consultant. It is an enormous lift to get this up off the ground. There's application processes. This is not, it's not simple. I, I can line it out further. I have, you know, just even more notes than you all have. It's probably a full-time job. I've talked to a lot of people. I talked to C Mar, a gentleman from C Mar last night that set up a program. He had everything, he was passed, they passed it from the county to C Mar. They passed him personnel, computers, HR. So he essentially just got the, he had to change logos on his letterhead. There was some more administrative stuff. He said it took him about three months to get it up and running. The people that I talked to that had started a program from scratch said anywhere from six months to a year. The full-time position to get that started. And to be perfectly honest, it needs to be someone that's well-versed in the behavioral health field. I can certainly kind of cobble it together. I don't think that's a good, in, in the best interest of the county. This is not my area of expertise. This is not what I'm good at. It's not what I'm passionate about, to be perfectly honest. And to have somebody that actually is or will end up having a subpar service, and I'm, I'm really not on board with that.
If I may, do we see, is it possible to, because I, I mean, my, my gut is ultimately, to have the most control, it would be nice to have it in-house. But I also am in no, I don't believe, I mean, I'm thankful to Skamania County to give us that 90-day period. I don't see how, I, I don't want to create, try to build a program in that 90 days. It just doesn't seem possible. I don't think it's either or. I think, you know, is it possible we could get, you know, we could outsource, that we don't commit to, you know, maybe it, we outsource for a year or six months or a year, whatever is a reasonable period of time, that we can then at least make an informed decision about, you know, if we want to keep it in-house and build a program that we kind of, there's not a gun to our head.
Yes.
Because that's, and if we're going to outsource, is there anybody to outsource to?
In the short term, there was not.
Right.
That's nowhere. So, and that's where this consultant comes in. Because I think it needs to be somebody that's well-versed and educated to be able to stand in front of you all and say, this is why this will work. This is why this won't work. This is what it's actually going to take. Because part of what I'm concerned about is I don't even understand the entire process to be able to give you a well-informed decision to say, like, I'm just not going to be able to answer all your questions. I don't know that I understand. I didn't know what a DCR was two months ago.
Right.
I've been reading a lot, but I'm still not up to speed. And so to have, and, and the other thing too, when you're pondering this is that I did speak with Leah this morning and she does not feel like there will be any issue for us to get the funding to cover this consultant to put this together through, through the monies that are going to be transferred over. So it's, what I'm asking for, well, it will go through our budget because it will be given to us. It will not hit our budget.
And this consultant, are you going to have to find them or is she going to give you references?
She has passed me, I think, three or four names at this point. And so then I would ask for just, I guess, letters of interest and then, I don't know how we proceed from there. I would engage with you all, whether you all wanted to interview them or how that would work.
So just so I'm clear, the consultant would be to come up with a plan as far, is that to look at both options? The, or is that to build the? But that, so that's kind of a different issue than the 90-day clock and the, on November 6th, which, you know, we are dealing with crises as we must, but we have, you know, we have another crisis on November 6th.
Yes.
That we have to at least have some interim solution for.
That's what this person would be looking at is November 6th.
Yeah. And so, and, you know, they could, they can work on getting the Behavioral Advisory Committee on board, setting that up so that those people can just be an extension of what they're getting done. There's a lot of community engagement that's needing to happen that I'm not able to keep up with, I think, on what I should. And to be able to do that education with the partners. We do have, we're working on putting together some education the week of August 1st. So everybody's on board with what's going to happen. It's going to be at the last minute because we're building workflows to say, okay, this is how it's going to work in the jails, how it's going to be in the hospital, this is what dispatch needs to do. So there's a lot of resources, but they're not going to be ready until just that last week. And then we'll, we'll make sure that we have a plan to get that out to everybody that needs it.
You're looking for a thumbs up on the consultant.
Yeah. I don't see that we have any other option.
So to be properly a professional services agreement, I would imagine, and I'll work with Rob to put that together. And then I'll work with Leah to get the funds. So they would, it would still roll under our department, but to get them on board and.
Do you have adequate capacity in your current budget prior to, I mean, that process?
I have that on my list that I might need a loan.
If Jen is listening.
I've, I've had to ask Greg for a loan before and, and.
I mean, we can do that if we have to, but it'd be interesting to see where you're at cash flow wise.
We might have to. It, it's on my list of things to think about.
And we are getting later into the year where it is more, you know, typically early in the season, it's not an issue. Everybody has capacity. Yeah. Here she goes.
Here she comes.
All I was suggesting is maybe have a conversation with.
I will.
If you didn't want to walk through that door.
Through that door.
Be on camera.
But see, coming through that door, you get the grand entrance.
I know. They, and they, they've already sent me a draft, they've already sent me a draft grant.
A microphone would be good if you would like to speak.
Yeah, I was just, I was going to suggest as we, you know, as the dollars flow from Beacon into the health departments. But, you know, this consultant thing, we need to get it rolling. And my question was, is there adequate cash in her accounts to be able to pay until we get reimbursed? And if not, we need to figure that out.
Pretty sure there is. August 26th, I believe.
If we could use what's existing and not have a supplemental, even though we all understand we're paying now and money comes later, it'd be easier for the public to understand if that wasn't part of it. But if it needs to be, it needs to be.
To receive the revenue, right. I just don't want us to get where we can't implement. We can't, you know, because we're like, well, we had to wait till, there's no dollars to pay for this. And it's like, that's, because again, that November 6th is the date that I'm, you know, we've dealt with August 6th. But November 6th will be next week. And the sooner we can get them on board, the, the better.
So I'm going to send an email this afternoon. I kind of had it teed up.
Just know that you can tell them we're good for it. We will, we'll pay eventually.
No, so Beacon is, Beacon there, Beacon increased their contract. So we don't have to do anything about actual payments. So.
Okay, that's helpful too.
And then just with the Skamania, so we have the inter-local agreement and I, I've already reached out to Lee, but I might have some, I might not make some deadlines. We're trying to get paperwork back and forth between the counties to get them to you on time to be on your schedule. But hopefully we can get them signed before August 6th. There might be some extra asks there. So, I know. I've pushed it with a lot of people this last week.
And a clock on Thursday. We could make exceptions.
I, I already asked Lee. He's very helpful.
You know, I was always taught, I, I can't put something on the calendar or on the agenda at 10:01 on Thursday. So.
No, I know.
We do have special circumstances.
I've given everybody the heads up and everybody's been very accommodating. I'm very grateful for that. Because I know.
How does that, sorry to interrupt. My brain started thinking, I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't want to get too far off the topic. How does that work for us, having a special meeting under, for emergencies to sign that? Would, would, can you do that without having a two-week notice? If we were just having a 20-minute meeting to sign a document?
You can. It falls under that. I think we, it's like three days or whatever it is. You have to give notice and, you know, it's, the 20, or maybe it's only 24-hour notice. If it's, there is, we, I can only think of one time we were done. It was an emergency.
A major issue that we needed to get something.
We can do it.
Yeah. I am committed to not making it a major issue. But I also am not making any promises. So.
We should be able to make, as long as their stuff works on their end.
Two governments all coordinating.
I know, two governments coordinating. At least they're in the same state. So.
I know. Y'all are giving me heartburn. I'm going to, we're going to, we're going to drive over and pick it up from them next Tuesday. Hopefully they're going to have it ready so that I can get it here and get it to Lee and get it signed.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's if everything works perfect.
I don't see any issue, especially if we have the draft that's going to them. Can't we just publish the dra, in our packet? And then that's the.
I can just send that to you now.
Right, as far as.
We could both do the same.
Yeah, kind of do them at the same, that doesn't seem, I mean, the only, the, the thing is the notice is just so that the people have a chance to, we're going to take action on something that they had an opportunity to see it. And as long as there was not some substantive amendment that they like, you know.
I don't think, I, I think that both PAs worked on it kind of together.
That's what I'm thinking. So if one of them, if they both pass it on the same day, one signs it, the other one's can sign it three hours later. They still passed it.
Are you, are all your signatures on the same page though? Like, and then you have two?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
No, no, but if you're going to drive it up here, we can still take out.
And not sign it. You could pick it up there at 2:00 and deliver it here at 4:30 and we'll sign it at 4:30. That way all the signatures are on the same page.
These documents have separate signature pages, by the way. The, the two boards can simultaneously ratify it.
There we go.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, legal god.
Okay, so we'll just do that. So I'll just, yeah. So I'll just send it. I have not done this. So I would like to, I would like to not do it again. So I'll just send the, over to you for the, for next week then. Thank you. Okay, I'll do that. Perfect. Anything else?
Yes, he does.
Jen will figure out how to pay for it. So, in the, in the interim.
Any further questions, sir?
Sorry. Beacon's paying for it.
And she said if you were concerned, she'd send you a letter that said that she would.
No, they're good for it.
Blank checks.
I'm not quite sure. It's quite, quite blank, but I, I think it's pretty generous. I, I think they really want to support us and help us out and make sure that we have what we need. And then I'll be back at 1:30 for the resolution. I don't know if you want to talk about it quickly now or we can talk about it at 1:30? That will identify Skamania County as the designated crisis responder for the county.
I'm good with it. Unless you want to talk more about it, then I'm good to go with it.
No, I'm good.
Can we get a second 90 days from like Yakima County? And then we'll do, we'll do Benton County.
Well, the, the problem is Comprehensive covers Yakima and Benton. So I would say probably not.
Okay, so.
But if you want, yes.
At 1:30, if you're going to be here, I'll probably have you sit there so you can quickly explain to the general public what we're talking about. And then.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen.
And thank your, thank your guru that was working on the Tips for Country Living thing. So.
Yes, I, I did. I, yeah, cost me a beer.
Well, that was cheap. What else can we get them to do? Anything for board pending or save board pending or anything for discussion or?
I don't think so, not at this time, nothing that's...
I don't necessarily do either, but we...
Hopefully, our, our seatmate is being successful in DC, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay, with that, I would entertain a motion for lunch.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to recess the board meeting and reconvene at 1:00.
I'd step down a second to motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. 1:00.
What is the little red dot flashy light next to the mic?
That's saying that's being recorded.
Even though it's not saying, you're being recorded, it is recorded.
I told you, and I took it off.
Ah, got it. We're good, we're live, we're ready to roll.
Yes, sir.
All right, being 1:00, we're going to open this session of the Clickattack County Board of Commissioners. Let the record show that Commissioner Christopher and Commissioner Sauter are present. Commissioner Anderson is away. We will open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
I would step down a second to that notion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Motion passed. Do we have any minutes? Don't see any on the card. Brings us to citizen comment. Citizen comment will be three minutes. The commissioners will respond if they so choose, starting at 1:25. Do we have anybody in the room that would like to have a citizen comment? I think that is a, not for now. Anybody online that would like to have a citizen comment?
I didn't know that was a question.
I was just going to pull a smart attic remark and say, okay, citizen comment is now closed.
Yeah, we're done.
So here we go, step forward, ma'am.
But I do for not paying attention.
I'm used to people not paying attention to me, I'm okay.
My name's Susan Kelsey, I'm from Goldendale. And I was just curious, I have a couple of questions. One of them is, with the minutes, the, the minutes on this day that you have, which is recorded, and I've noticed that there are times when it's a long time before it's posted. So my first question is, why is that? I know you look it over. Do all of you look it over? And then, my other question is, when you look it over, are you looking for discrepancies, or are you correcting things? Are you, what are you doing with the minutes when you look over them? And then, is there a window of time that you have to have those posted after each meeting? Thank you.
It's a lot of questions in there. Hope I can was able to write them all down.
Write them all down.
Anybody else online have a citizen comment? Cherry, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I wanted to bring your attention to Yakima County Commissioners have just enacted a moratorium for solar to protect their county. And last week, I talked about how the Commissioners had the opportunity to write solar ordinances when you had a moratorium in 2021 that was rescinded in May 2021 without any solar ordinances for our entire county. And I am asking again that our Commissioners, as you see neighboring counties enacting moratoriums to protect their county from these, and I know you have been sent the, the article on the Yakima County Commissioners doing a moratorium, they're trying to protect their county before these foreign entities come and take over without any, any control of their own county. So this is where I ask our county again, will you write Clickattack County solar ordinances so some places can be protected and that the solar is sited in appropriate places? I don't think surrounding Goldendale with industrial solar complexes, thousands of acres, is a good look for the city of Goldendale. So I'm asking again if you will, as our county commissioners, follow suit as other counties have done, and re-impose a moratorium to write solar ordinances to protect Clickattack County from foreign entities. And also, look at Texas right now. They're having a heat wave. Again, Texas is having problems. They cannot keep up with these renewable energies. These renewable energies are not what's best, in my opinion, and I ask again, you have a town hall so we can discuss what industrial solar really brings to Clickattack County. And I'm also asking that you review the tax method for these renewable energy companies, and that you change the tax method for the highest and best use for income for our county. You do have, I know it's the assessor, but you can also encourage the assessor to use the highest and best good that gets our county the most revenue. If you're going to allow these renewable energy companies to come in, you should be making the best deals possible for our county, and that includes the landfill that you're, you're negotiating with now. So I'm asking you to reenact a moratorium and give Clickattack County solar ordinances as other counties are doing. Thank you.
Darn near perfect timing, Ms. Cherry, you had five seconds left. Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in the room want to make a citizen comment? Anybody online want Anybody at all, unmute yourself, wave your hand, start your video. Exciting day on the airwaves today. Attendance is down just a smidge. Well, if anybody has citizen comment, either in the room or online, just shout out, wave your hand, or say something. If not, we will start signing some documents. 0088, go ahead.
Yeah.
Greg Wagner. 0088, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Gellmer Eldred, Goldendale, Washington. Since Glenwood is under the Yakima Nation Authority, is that still considered District 2?
Yes.
Even though they're not part of the county?
They are part of the county, the, the land is just owned by the tribe, or, sorry, is part of the reservation. The land is owned by the same people that owned it a year ago, and they still reside in Clickattack County, and they still are District 2, and they still vote.
Well, it's not really owned, it's kind of like a lease, because they don't have any authority over selling it or anything. But anyway, so that, your answer is that that is District 2, even though it's Yakima Nation land?
Correct.
You're sure of that? You're sure of that?
Yes, and you can check with the county auditor if you have questions, because the auditor's jurisdiction.
They don't know, I already checked with them, they're not sure, so. Anyway.
Is that all your comments, sir? Sounds like it. Next, Greg, I think you were there. Do you have citizen comment?
Greg Wagner, Greg Wagner with C. You know, on June 16th, radio interview, Mr. Christopher stated that extensive ag land where wind and solar is sited will be, personal property with, or the land will be taxed on the amount of money they are receiving in their lease. You said you didn't say that, you said you used the word "probably," went back and listened, you did say it, you didn't use the word "probably." So, the land should be taxed at the highest and best use. So for the last 15 years, for wind, the land hasn't been taxed properly, and the county's lost a large sum of revenue. So I have to ask you, why did you say you never said that when it's recorded on the KOKK radio interview? Did leasing landowners call you and tell you, you better not tax my land? That some of the people that you say come and threaten you every day? So the county's losing a lot of money on that. I'd like to also ask Mr. Sauter, why weren't the citizens allowed to vote on the bond issue for the annex? Why did you go to the state and get a bond that didn't require a vote of the people? Is that because you knew the building, the bond wouldn't get approved by the citizens? Why did you tell the citizens that building was going to cost $16,800,000 when in reality the final cost after 20 years is $25,594,946.44? And that's if you make every payment on time. And to answer the First Lady's question, the county commissioners do edit the minutes to the meeting. We have emails that prove that they do that. So, they shouldn't be doing it, but they do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your kind words, Mr. Wagner. Anybody else have citizen comment today? Sir, would you like to respond now, or wait until 1:25, or have the option?
Um, I guess I'll start now, and if somebody wants to make citizen comment, please break in, this is your time. Yeah, so Ms. Kelsey, as far as the minutes, the length of time, I'm assuming there probably is some, like, we have to get them posted within a period of time. I, I don't know what that is. I think we do endeavor to try to do it as quickly as we can. I will remind people that minutes are not transcripts, they are, they're sort of general, supposed to give the flavor of the meeting, and they're action minutes, so anytime we take an action, that's very specific in there. As far as to editing them, as far as how the process, we all do look at them, and we get to see them, and if we have some, we also get to see each other's proposed edits. We all have to agree on the final language, that it's accurate to our recollection of what happened in the meeting, just like any other organization, you have to see those meetings. People will raise, saying, you know, or, oh, I wasn't actually here, and I'm in the minutes, or something like that. Any, any substantive changes are not, you can't really make substantive changes if that's, because you, especially now where they're on tape, you can go back and review it. If that's, you know, and quite often, that is what the folks that are preparing the minutes do. If there's a question, they go back and look at the tape, and it's like, what, what did I say exactly? Because sometimes, like all of us, three weeks ago, be like, is that how, is that what I said? And generally speaking, yeah, they're accurate, that is, that's what I said, so it's in the minutes. We are trying to get better about getting them out timely, because there is interest in them, and it doesn't do any good if it's six weeks later. It's nice to have them closer. Wow. These are, these are difficult to answer quickly. To Mr. Eldred's question about Yakima Nation and Glenwood, yes, I would, I would concur with my seatmate. The, the part of the reservation that, or the part of Glenwood that is now considered to be inside the reservation is still in Clickattack County. Those are still residents of Clickattack County, they are voters, they own their land, they pay taxes, they do, nothing really changes. There are, you know, I will remind folks that there's a large chunk of Yakima County has always been on the Yakima Indian Reservation, and those folks are citizens of the United States and are afforded every right that any other citizen is, and they don't have to get permission to sell their land from the tribe, or that's, their owners just like anybody else's, no difference with that. Mr. Wagner, and I, I think I've answered this before, we routinely use, or mischaracterize the word "bond." The reason we did not have to go out to vote of the people on the bond is because it's not a bond, it is not. We used existing revenue, we, we had a public process, which I will remind folks, that when we were contemplating replacing all the annex buildings with the new building, we did go out to a public process. We invited public input on what we were going to do. We had a booth at the fair that showed everything, because we didn't really know what we wanted to do, or what there was appetite for in the county. Overwhelmingly, people were supportive, that was all the input we got back from everybody, was that it was going to be a good thing, and there was, there was, frankly, there wasn't really a whole lot of negative comments, and that is going back three and four years, we went through that process. Ultimately, and when you're talking numbers, again, it's, let's make sure we're actually talking about, I'm not saying your numbers are not right, they're not, but you are, you're either misinterpreting them, or you are doing it in a way to try to make it seem like it's something. The building costs $16.8 million, that is what it cost, exactly. We have a bid for it, that is what we're paying for the building. All of the other, there is, we ended up spending probably $20 to $22 million, depending on, because we put some of our own dollars early on, our own resources. That was always planned on, as far as that was removal of annex buildings, building parking lots, doing all this other stuff. There are other costs outside of the building. That's not some new thing, that was always anticipated, and it was always disclosed. The number you're saying, why are we paying $24 million? That's, we, we borrowed $20 million, and over a 20-year period, paying interest, we're going to pay back about $24 million with the interest payments. When I buy a house for $300,000, I'm not telling people, oh, I've actually, I spent $600,000 when I have 30 years' worth of mortgage interest, and no, I spent $300,000. And yes, I have every expectation that we will make every payment on time, as we have the first two, and so, it's a 20-year period, and our interest rate is, I don't know what it is exactly, because you've asked for that, but it was highly competitive. It was the cheapest dollars that you could get at the time, which by today's standards is super low. As far as, we will be very well-served the way we did that. And again, the public had ample opportunity, we didn't do anything, we completely complied with the law on everything that we've done, and I will remind people, is that I, we obligate, we spend $50 million a year now, as commissioners, through our budget process. We don't send that $50 million out every year for the public to vote on. We live in a representative democracy, that we elect people to make those decisions for us, and if we are out of step with the, the majority of the people, that gets changed. And I will remind folks, I have been through that vetting process four times. So this, I'm not a one-off, and, like, people didn't know what they were getting, they, they did, and they, I was, so I've been, I have been affirmed four times. so I've been, I have been affirmed four times. So the majority of the people agree with whatever my approach has been. And so to characterize it otherwise, I think is, is inaccurate.
Thank you, Commissioner Sauter. Anybody else on Zoom that has not spoken before wants citizen comment? Anybody in the room? Okay, I will kind of respond to some of those. About the minutes, yes, we do look at the minutes. We edit them for sentence structure. We added them for spelling and grammar. We also edit them for inaccuracies. And if we see something, we say something. And then they are finally approved by the whole board. Yes, they take longer than we all want and we are currently working on correcting them on all forms. As far as reviewing the tax method, it's not for us to review the tax method. If you have a problem with the way the elected assessor does their job, you can run for office or you could take it up with them. Don't take their job up with me. It's not my job. I have answered questions in regard to taxation to try to make it a little easier for people to understand. Most people do fine with that. Some people like to take things out of context and weaponize them. So I will no longer be doing that. And for Mr. Wagner, if I omitted the word, the elected assessor will probably tax a certain way. I'm sorry for admitting the word probably. From now on, all of your taxation questions need to be referred elsewhere other than me because I will no longer be answering any assessor questions, auditor questions, or treasurer questions, or sheriff questions, or judge questions, or prosecutor questions. I would like to remind everybody that part of the time capsule thing was some news articles from 1992 when Hall Hotel was essentially torn down by the county and parking lot made. It said in 1992 that it was, there were plans for a future county building on this lot. So people had a say so 30 years ago if they didn't like this building. When I was a citizen before I ran for office, I attended the community meetings about this building. I don't remember you at them, Mr. Wagner, and I think I would have remembered that since I remember everybody that was in the room. So that was the time to complain about something was during the beginning of the process, not at the end of the process. You have a habit of complaining about things at the end of the process because you didn't want to get involved at the beginning of the process. That's your choice and it is what it is. That's all I have. Any other comments by anybody in the room or online that has not spoken yet? I see none. So if anybody does want to speak that has not already spoken today, please say so. Raise your hand. unmute yourself and we will take your comment. Until then, we will get back to our paperwork. You might have to come forward to the mic just so
that you reserve some of your time.
And so what I think I heard you say was that there's a difference between the minutes and the recording.
Potentially.
So those are two separate things that you actually have a recording and then the minutes are printed from that for you and that's what you're?
No, minutes, we take minutes and write the, prepare the minutes, draft minutes. If we go back and clarify with the video on certain names or certain agencies or certain, we have a question. We go back and look at the video. No, it's not transcribed.
Not a transcribe.
Okay. Because I noticed when I'm watching the text on there,
Oh, yeah, that's
they, they flip words or they'll
They say hippopotamus on there. Yeah, yeah.
So those are the things that you're talking about then, editing.
Potentially. But yes, you may see a difference in the minutes from what you saw actually, or heard actually spoken in the video. The video is going to be the end-all. That's what happened. The minutes are only an interpretation of what was said in the video.
Right. The, the closed captioning is not used at, or like it's not that, those aren't where the minutes are coming from. We just have that on so that, because for some folks, it's easier for them to read the text than to hear it, I guess. So.
Again, those aren't accurate either.
No, those are not accurate either. So. But it is, if there's a question, we can go back, they can, we can go back and look. And it's, yes, generally it's more like we didn't get somebody's name or we had an agency here and we didn't, you know, they came with four people and their, two of them were just there and we don't know who they were. And they, maybe they introduced themselves and so you can go back and look at that. There's, but again, they're not transcripts. They're, they're action minutes. So they're, they're more detailed of when we, you know, make a motion, when we, they don't necessarily get into the substance of the, in any detail for the, because you can always, especially now, if you're interested, you can go, just go watch the, watch the tape if you want to.
So the tapes are never deleted or edited?
No, oh, no.
They will be eventually when they're no longer disclosed or
They're past their
retention period of seven years or whatever it is.
It could
because there was, there was questions during my campaign of what was said in this room was actually said because it wasn't in the minutes. We now have a recording. So all of us can be brought up seven years from now and hear exactly what each individual said. There's going to be no question on whether they said it or not. The minutes are supposed to be a close and accurate representation, but the tape is the final say so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Citizen comment that hasn't spoken before? The 7, that's 7211, have you spoken yet?
Yes, I did. But this other lady spoke again. I'd like to have a chance.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wagner, your time had expired and she had time left on her clock. Anybody that has not spoken yet?
That's not true.
Can you mute him, please? Okay. Anybody else want to speak for citizen comment today?
With my five seconds
Sherry, you've already spoken today too.
I would like
Anybody that has not spoken today, this is not rebuttal. This is citizen comment. A clarification is one thing. Rebuttal is a different. Anybody that has not spoken, would they like to speak for citizen comment today? And I would apologize to Greg and Sherry, but, but this is not a debate. This is a formal meeting and it needs to be presented properly. And in debate and rebuttal is not part of citizen comment. With that, if anybody that has not spoken wants citizen comment, feel free to unmute yourself or raise your hand or get our attention. That's fine. I just want to make sure I'm silent.
Just slipped that in there.
It's the edited minutes or?
Oh.
It's not. I'm kidding.
Too soon.
What is it anyway?
It's a right-of-way road approach.
Okay, just for the record.
They are being required to have a 12-inch culvert. If anybody wants to know. I guess that one's done. Are those were all done or not? Okay.
All right, it is now 1:30. Citizen comment is over. 1:30, we will under unfinished business is a resolution in the matter of designated Skamania County Health as Clickatack County's designated provider for county designated crisis responder services. Public Health Director Erin Quinn with an update.
Yes. So we wrote, as is your purview as county commissioners, it is you that designates crisis responders to serve the county residents. So this resolution updates Skamania County Community Health as the designated crisis responder as of August 6th. It also rescends the designations that you had awarded to crisis responders under comprehensive mental health effective August 10th. I made the decision to give them a couple of extra days. I assume that if you work on August 5th, that there may be some follow-up that you would need to be able to complete and felt like they should have just a buffer. So that's if you look at the dates that are a little bit off, that's why, that's why I did that. I don't know if that's required, but it seemed fitting. So this will identify Skamania County effective August 6th and rescind comprehensives privileges August 5th or 10th, I'm sorry.
And this is, the term of this is 90 days, correct?
There is no term on the specific resolution. It will just identify them. So at the end of 90 days, and maybe if they just love working with us, they want to extend that. We don't have to do another resolution. If they choose not to, we'll have to do another resolution rescinding their privileges and granting them to the follow-on care, care provider.
Questions?
No, I was, when I looked at it closer, I did see that the effective date was August 6th because I was a little, like we're doing the interlocal with Skamania County, which we have not. You know, we're not done with it, but this, so I thought, were we getting the cart before the horse as far as that we were designating? But this is effective August 6th though. Yeah, no, I'm totally fine.
I'm fine with it as well. I'm
Okay. If you're ready for a motion, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, when I would make, we have before us a resolution in the matter of designating, designating Skamania County Community Health as Clickatack County's designated provider of county designated, designated crisis responders effective August 6, 2022. My motion is to approve the resolution.
Okay, I'll step, step down in second to motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Next up is a request for variance to the county burn ban within zone three. Clickatack County Fire District Number Three on behalf of Michael Saliga. Do we have any kind of a quickie explanation? Either the why?
He can reach out to the fire district. The chief has met with him. Mr. Michael's parents actually own the property and they have given their approval for them to, them to host this event. And the chief has inspected the grounds. There's a whole list of
Conditions.
Requirements that he has to meet. At any time if they're not meeting them, shut them down.
Right. Okay.
Of course, the city management as well as the sheriff who notified if this is approved so they're aware of it as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Just for the record, I did reach out to the gentleman. It is essentially a sweat lodge of which is their, they're claiming religious freedoms. I, I agree with the, the Fire District's interpretation and conditions. With those conditions, I have no problem on this. Do you have any issues, sir?
No. I, I also read the report and I, I think the Fire District is, has put in adequate conditions to protect public safety. And so, and if they're, and they're the, they're the system, they're the experts in the field and I, I would defer to them if they're okay with it. So if you are ready for a motion, Mr. Chair?
I am, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we have a request for a variance to the Clickatack County burn ban within zone three. Fire Protection District Number Three on behalf of Michael Saliga. This is for a blessing ceremony event on Wednesday, July 20th, 2022. My motion is to approve the variance with all of the conditions that were recommended by Fire District Three.
All righty. I will step down in second to motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Jeff, do you have something for us or? I'm ahead of schedule, so jump on in.
I know I've called you over the weekend, but also wanted to follow up, make you aware that we're doing everything that we can. We have one more person out of the communications officer's schedule currently for an undetermined amount of time due to illness. And I am working with HR to figure out how we can cover these shifts. And just wanted to make you aware that I am also reaching out to past communications officers that still live and work in the community, some of which still work for the county and other offices. I've got one that works for another public safety agency that is willing to come back and help out on an emergency temporary basis. So I'm going to work with HR to figure out how to make that happen within the next couple of days so that we can continue proper coverage the rest of this week and into the weekend. And until we can at least get our one person back from illness. Wanted to make sure that you were on board with that if you had any issues. But talking to the HR director, I don't believe that, you know, we're going to have any problem hiring them on a temporary casual basis. Don't believe that we need any authorizations from you to do that, but whatever we do, we have to do it in a hurry.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Tell them they're hired whether they want to be or not.
Can't go there. Don't think that doesn't cross my mind.
I know. Well, there are, you know, and I know the area agencies too are in the same place. I mean, it's not like, because I know folks would help each other out if they could, but
Everybody is
Everybody is short. And I think that just illustrates the need that we've got to get this figured out so that we have, we got enough bodies to cover shifts if
We currently have three people in various stages of training. Two of them are in a month and a half and one is at the one-month point. Still doing well. And, you know, they're in that pipeline and we're looking to hire more. At this point, being able to train with the short staff that we have is, is part of the problem. But right now we've got three people that are very promising at this stage. So hopefully in the next four to five months and get one person that's out on FMLA back and those three people out of training will be back at ground zero and then start and those three people out of training will be back at ground zero and then start to build to where we don't have to have this continual cycle. But for the next week to two weeks, extraordinary circumstances can play. So if you hear my voice on the radio, don't be surprised.
All righty, thank you, sir.
I still want to hear your voice on the phone when I'm calling for the services.
Really?
No, no, I would, no, but I mean, I don't want to be the one, I don't want to have to ever call. I don't ever, I, I like talking to 911 dispatchers, but not in an official capacity.
Not on 911.
Not on 911, so.
I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All righty, consent agenda if you're ready, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda, noting that we are going to pull item number seven for further discussion, so a total of 10 items. My motion is to approve.
Okay, I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Is it pulled out of here? So I don't inadvertently sign it.
I kind of sent them that message last Thursday, just traded and inadvertently signed something. Thursday, Friday, whatever it was.
Ready to pay the bill?
Yep. Bills, pay estimates, in your order, sir. Wish I could help you, but.
No, we'll do the individuals first. Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have before, this is a final pay estimate to Thompson Brothers Excavating Incorporated, total amount of 170,378.57. This is for the countywide guidepost and signing project CRB 358. My motion is to approve and pay.
Yeah, we'll step down and second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, next we have pay estimate number three to James Dean Construction in the amount of 553,122.51. This is for the Corkneet Road Project CRP 342 and CRP 353. My motion is to approve the pay estimate and pay the bill.
I would step down and second that motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, and then finally, I would make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of. Yeah. Is there more than one? Okay, 198,289.67 for the date ending July 18th, 2022. My motion is to approve.
Yeah, we'd sit down and second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I'm just curious because we, we generally, we approve the pay estimates and that is more than the, this is everything together. No, there's no payroll, but we just, we spent 170,000 dollars to Thompson Brothers and 553,000 dollars to James Dean Construction and this is only for 198,000 dollars. Well, no, I'm sure, it maybe we just authorized this, but it's actually not in this AP. It's in the next batch, you know, next week's batch. That's what I'm guessing. So, no, they're usually, I've never, they've never made a mistake, so.
With that, I do have a question.
Go look here.
Bear with us, online, we're pausing, wait. Commissioner Soder looks at some paperwork.
Yeah, I know. I'm just confirming because I did not see them. Yeah, that's, they're just not in this batch. It's good, that makes me feel better. That's just one of the things I check because it's, there should be, you know, the sum of the parts should be not, there'll be more next week.
Or you'll have a finding.
Yeah, yeah.
Question on landfill gas, apparently that's coming up soon where they go over the projects. I'm once again requesting that we, as a county, have an ask and we put our own proposed project in there and that would be the 250,000 for the Goldendale wastewater treatment plant so that we can.
Don't use.
Unallocate the 250 of 09 dollars and use it in a different avenue. So if we want to do that, we need to get our own application and submit that to PUD. So I was kind of looking for a second.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, I would do that. I'd like to use some of that for something that's.
Non-PVD related?
How hard, how we are so, we have so little experience doing applications, how, how involved are the application process?
Some of them that have been submitted in the past are pretty intense and complicated.
Could we put, because of what I'm thinking of this one, could we just pull the application that was given to the case of EDA for the 09 and then just re and?
That was our discussion.
Okay.
Was talking to Larry over at the city, he didn't know the landfill gas was even an option. So when he came essentially to Casey Pita for the funding.
Right, that was.
I don't know that McClure thought it was an option. And I think it's a, a better use, it's what those funds are supposed to be for.
Right.
So I would like to try that avenue anyway.
Yeah. I'd support that.
Okay. Any, anything else that you have, sir, for the good of your?
No. Okay.
I don't even, Mr. Prosecutor, do you have anything for open session? Anything for closed session? Yes, he does. Okay, with that, we will be going into executive session in accordance with RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 PRN I, or is that an L? I PRN, okay. Issues of a general nature will be discussed in open session. We will be logging off the Zoom and we will see you all next week.
How long are you, are we anticipating? Yeah. 15 minutes, why don't we start with 15?
15 minutes.